Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, November 8th, 2021. The time is now 6:30 PM. If we could stand for the Pledge Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for John Jack Brown. Jack Brown passed away on November 2nd after a long illness. Jack was a longtime Abington resident and served several terms on the Board of Abington Sewer Commissioners. He was very involved at the Senior Center, always going out of his way to be helpful, and served as a van driver for many years. He also served on the Council on Aging. We offer our condolences to his wife Marie and his family and friends. Jack will be greatly missed. Thank you. So just before we get going, I do want to quickly just hit on and thank all the department heads, the departments, and everyone who stepped up during this storm that we had, the DPW, the police, the fire, everyone in Town Hall, everyone that was fielding text messages, phone calls, emails. I don't think any single person in town had a moment off during that storm. Constant communication, and I just wanted to put that out there so all the town residents know, all the departments know, that, you know, everything that was done, tirelessly working through this storm, it doesn't go unnoticed. A lot of times, you don't see the behind the scenes, but there is a lot. The DPW working short staff through it, down three guys. The DPW has since worked their normal shifts and they worked an extra 150 hours just to clean up from the storm, and they're still not done cleaning up from the storm, so that's a big one. But I just want to let everyone know, it doesn't go unnoticed. And I want to thank the departments. I also want to thank the residents for, you know, bearing with us through this, because it is tough sometimes, you know, down power lines, trees. There's a lot of moving parts that, you know, you, the residents, don't see. And behind the scenes, it's constant communication all day long. So sometimes it's tough, but, you know, things move slow, but we get them done. So I just want to kind of reach out and say that.
If I could, I was going to make this announcement later, but I will now that you brought it up. I got several phone calls, especially from the Green Street area, and one resident called me in the afternoon and said a tree was down. So I immediately called Scott and John Stone, and they said they were aware of it. There was a wire under it. They couldn't move it. They had to wait for National Grid. So they were hoping to do it the next day. And this was on Thursday, I believe. About 8 o'clock Thursday night, and that's the key, 8 o'clock Thursday night when most everyone was gone, DPW, I got a message that the tree in the street had cones in front of it, but a car had just slammed on its brakes and almost hit it. So I again texted John Stone and Scott. And again, 8 o'clock at night, John had someone up there with flashing barrels, flashing lights within a half hour. John has gone above and beyond, not just in this past storm, but John and his staff. But John has been phenomenal for this town, and I just want to give a shout out to him. And 7 o'clock the next morning, I went up there and he already had backhoes and trucks and probably six or seven guys up there removing the tree. Unfortunately for the Green Street area, it was one of the last areas to get lights. And hopefully that we can get some answers from National Grid as to what the problem was up there and that maybe in the future, we can resolve it. So, but again, a shout out to the Highway Department, DPW, and John Stone and Scott for getting right back to us all the time. Thank you.
So anyways, public announcements. Alex Hagerty, do you have anything?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. The Boy Scouts of America are answering the call to fight against hunger by collecting food with supporting community agencies for families and children during these difficult times, especially as we head into the holiday season. Boy Scouts of America Troop 41 will be running the Abington Food Drive Sunday, November 14th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Abington Food Pantry at 425 Plymouth Street. Troop 41 is asking Abington residents who are able and willing to donate food to bring them to the food pantry. Suggested items include dish soap, laundry detergent, toilet paper, paper towels, tissues, napkins, cranberry sauce, gravy, green beans, corn, stuffing, mayonnaise, peanut butter, jelly, hamburger helper, soup, rice, pasta, macaroni and cheese, canned goods, cereal, pancake or muffin mix, crackers or cookies, or both, dried fruits, snack bars, adult or infant diapers, and any other non-perishable food items. Please do not include frozen foods, open containers, or expired items. Due to COVID-19, Troop 41 will be taking precautionary measures, wearing masks, and providing contactless drive-through drop-off where scouts and volunteers will receive donations by removing bags from the truck or rear hatch of the vehicles. Please contact Chris Schultz at 339-788-2432, or at his email at troop41abington@gmail.com with any questions you may have. Help us provide food and help us provide food and hope to our neighbors. And also, I would like to say that a huge shout out to the Fire Department, the Police Department, the DPW, National Grid, and Town Hall for everything that they did to restore our power here in town, all across the town of Abington. Their work did not go unnoticed, and it's deeply appreciated. And hopefully, we can, you know, moving forward, you know, do, we can help them even more in the future. That's all I have from announcements, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alex. Mike?
Sure. First off, thank you to our Veteran Service Officer, Adam Gunn, and the Senior Center staff for putting together the Veterans Day luncheon. I was out of state for the week, so I wasn't able to attend, but close to 50 veterans were treated to a wonderful lunch and honorary greeting from the department heads, as well as many treats and services provided by local organizations and vendors. And I've heard nothing but good things from those who attended. And this week, the Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade will be on Thursday, November 11th, starting at 10:00 AM. Parade begins here in Abington on Central Street at the Police Station, continues north on Washington Street, turning right onto Adams, and then right onto North Ave, finishing by the Depot Restaurant. And that's it.
Okay. Alex, did you have anything else?
I do. Tomorrow, from 7:00 AM to 11:00 AM, Martin's Restaurant on North Ave will be offering their annual free breakfast for all veterans and first responders. And this is something Fred Villa has done for many, many years, and it's one of the reasons we gave him Abington Best a couple of months ago. But please come out. It's free for all veterans and spouses. If you bring your spouse, I'm sure they'll take care of them too, and all first responders. And also, I want to give a shout out to our Chairman, Kevin DiMaggio, for organizing the vigil last week at Nysby Field for Elijah Lewis. Kevin put a lot of time into the setting it up, along with Reverend Christie Coburn, and I just wanted to give him a shout out. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Again, I would turn it to basically to Christie Coburn. She definitely worked tirelessly on that, and Scott as well, kind of, you know, collaborating and getting everything together. But Christie was a lifesaver on that, getting everything together. So I appreciate all the help from Christie, and she deserves a shout out as well for that. One last thing is the Charter Review Committee. A previously appointed volunteer has recently resigned from her seat on this committee due to scheduling conflicts. Unless a moderator is seeking one resident who would like to fill this vacancy on the Charter Review Committee. Volunteer members of the Charter Review Committee are expected to work with the department heads, town officials, and other interested parties, or interested residents, to gather input and recommendations, and to later present their proposed charter amendments to a future town meeting. Interested residents should apply before Wednesday, November 17th, by sending a letter or email with their name, address, specific qualifications, or reasons why you're interested through the town website, or by dropping it off at the town manager's office. Scott, you'll have this link up tomorrow on the
Yes.
Website?
Yep.
So that is on there for, that will be up tomorrow for an open seat on the Charter Review Committee. And I believe the town moderator, Sean Riley, will then make his pick and notify us.
Yeah, we'll probably do it at a meeting, I think we did last time.
Okay. All right. Is there any other public announcements, public comments? Does anyone from the audience want to get up and speak? Any public comments on the agenda? You can step right up and say your name and address.
Thank you, Selectmen. My name is Jason Hennington. I live at 115 Green Street in Abington. As was mentioned earlier, we had a massive power outage recently because of the fallen tree that was on Green Street itself. During that time, in those four days that followed, the neighborhood was, morale was very low, and people were wondering what's going on. They were very worried about the situation. The bleak darkness, there was burglaries happened, a car got stolen on Doris Street. It was this very messy situation, and a lot of people were worried about what was going on. And one person who spoke to a lot of the folks in the neighborhood was Alex Hagerty. And I just wanted to give a quick shout to Alex for all he did for everybody. He helped everyone. He was the light and moment of darkness, and we really appreciate all he did for us. So thank you, Alex.
Thank you, Jason.
And I also have a statement that was just messaged to me by another neighbor. I don't know if that'd be okay for me to read right now, or if that is allowed.
What's the name on it?
Danielle Light.
Danielle Light, okay. She lives as well?
She lives on Clapp Street,
Okay.
which is part of the neighborhood. She did not give me her exact street address, but she, I don't know if it'd be okay if I could read that statement?
Yeah, you can do it, yeah.
Okay, thank you. "My name is Danielle Light. I reside on Clapp Street. Unfortunately, due to my child's theater class, I am unable to be here in person. I have sent this to Jason and asked him to read it for me. There's much to be said in regards to last week's power outage and delayed cleanup and restoration. It seems the Green Street neighborhood continues to fall short when it comes to both. However, I am, I am for one thankful that Alex Hagerty worked so diligently for us. Being a public servant and taking care of your constituents involves more than checking in by phone or social media. It requires a total and complete care and concern for the town, its neighborhoods, and most importantly, its people. It requires standing, acting, and being willing to get your hands dirty for those people, regardless of the naysayers who discourage such. It requires hearing the frustrated voices, the mother's teary because their child with type 1 diabetes has insulin in the fridge, and the gas prices are crippling her family to keep a generator running for five days, or a deadly couple who is going on day five with no heat. We had a tree in the middle of the road for two days while National Grid continued to drive by it. Vehicles couldn't see it at night, and should there have been an emergency, we would have been easily cut off in one direction. Alex Hagerty did what we as voters expected to be done. He tirelessly listened, acted, and cared. The town of Abington should commend this young man for being the finest of examples of public servants." Thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle Light.
Okay. Any other public comments from the audience? Seeing that, okay, at this time, I would like, I know the majority of the audience is here for the Board of Health. If you guys don't mind, I'd like to move it up and just put it, let's just get that done now. That way, you know, if people want to take off afterwards, they can.
Or you can stay and listen to the chat.
Yeah. Does that work out with you guys from the Board of Health? So at this time, you want to come up, and we should be able to sit right here and reach all the microphones. Go ahead and open.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yep. Do you want to pull that microphone over? Yeah.
The time being 6:48 PM, I'd like to call the Board of Health meeting to order. All members are present.
Okay. I just, Tim Traipen is, I'm not here tonight. He did ask that he could call in on remote participation, so I'm just checking in with him to see if he's available.
Hello?
Tim?
Yes.
All right. Can everyone on the board hear Tim? Tim, can you just say hello one more time?
Hello?
Hey, Tim.
Okay. Can you hear him down there?
Yes, I can.
Okay, perfect, okay. All right. So with that being said, Board of Health has opened their meeting as well. We are now in a joint meeting with Board of Health for the appointment of one to the Board of Health to fill a vacancy until the next town election in April. So at this time, we had how many applicants?
Three.
Three applicants.
We had three applicants apply. The applicants here tonight. If anyone would like to get up and speak, please come on up, state your name and address. If you want to say a little piece by yourself. You don't have to speak if you don't want to, but by all means, get up and we'd love to hear from you.
My name is Andrew King. I live at 493 Hancock Street. First, I'd just like to say thank you to both boards for taking the time to listen to my statement before making the decision. I would say that this pandemic has hit the sobriety community especially hard. In 2019, according to the CDC website, 70,630 people died from a drug overdose in the United States. And then, according to drugabuse.gov, and I will quote their website, it is a provisional statistic as well, but it has been, more people have died last year than in any other one-year period they have on record. I myself know from experience what it is like to overdose. And if I am elected to the Board of Health, or appointed to the Board of Health, I will make sure that any person struggling with addiction will know that they have a voice, they have someone to come to talk to, and that they will never have to be alone again. And the biggest reason, I think, for this, for the numbers going up 30% in one year, is the shutdowns. That these people are not able to get to their Alcoholics Anonymous meetings and Narcotics Anonymous meetings. I've been sober since June 25th, 2013, and it's taken me a lot of hard work to stay sober this long. I've gone from being homeless and having nothing to being a homeowner, a husband, a father, and a stepdad, to four wonderful, smart children. Having that in my past, I think I would make a great addition to the Board of Health. And I just want to make sure that all the people in Abington know the truth, know the facts on everything health-wise, so that they can make a decision for what they feel is best for them and their family. And I will end it with, if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them here now, or after the meeting, after you make your decision.
Thank you, Mr. King. Does anyone from the board have any questions for Mr. King at this time?
Thank you. Mr. King, I think this year, at a Board of Health meeting, I've had a
Could you speak into the microphone, please? I know it's kind of off.
Sorry.
Let's try this way. All right, I'll start over. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Mr. King, earlier this year, at a Board of Health meeting on the public record, you referenced a Department of Health regulation related to accessing the MBTA.
Mm-hmm.
At that time, you acknowledged you were aware of the Department of Public Health Regulation, but you were knowingly, willingly, and were going to continue being in violation. My concern is, per the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards, one of the duties of this position is enforcing health policies as set by the Department of Public Health. So I want to give you an opportunity to respond, so that in good conscience, we can, you know, vote reasonably today.
In good conscience, I can say that, to my knowledge, on the MBTA's website, if you have a medical exemption, you do not have to wear a mask on the MBTA. And I have been stopped several times and asked to put a mask on, on the MBTA, and that is my response. I have a medical exemption. And I get told, okay, go ahead.
Do you have any concerns about enforcing Department of Health regulations? Should you be a Board of Health member and see a citizen or a resident in violation of such?
If the violation is voted in as a regulation,
Yes, sir.
I don't have a choice but to do that.
Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add to this conversation?
I don't have anything.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. King, I just will, not to get too far into this, because I want to let other people speak as well, but so as part of the, in the handbook that you'll receive, so as far as, you know, a member of any board committee or commission in relation to his or her community shall, and realize that his or her basic function is to make policy known to administer it unless otherwise empowered by the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or the Charter of the Town of Abington, realize that he or she is one of a team and should abide by and carry out all board decisions once they are made, and be well-informed concerning the duties of a board member on both local and state levels. Remember that he or she represents the entire community at all times. Accept the appointment as a means of unselfish service, not benefit personally from politically, or politically from his or her activities, and making all decisions relative to individual appointments, he or she shall avoid political patronage by judging candidates on merit, experience, and qualifications. And before any vote, he or she shall refuse, shall not vote on any matter involving an immediate family member, spouse, mother, father, sister, brother, or in which he or she has a financial interest. I just want to give you a heads up on that. Do you understand those rules? If you were to get on, that you would, those are the rules that some of the rules you would have to follow when you'd be signing. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes.
I apologize. Could we also get the opportunity for any of the other applicants to respond if they don't understand those rules?
Yep.
So Mr. King's not the only one being interrupted?
Yes, he just sees the first one up so far, so
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't got to anyone else yet, so.
I apologize. I didn't mean to interrupt there.
Yep, no worries.
I'm sorry.
No worries. Is there any other questions from Mr. King? Yes.
Hi, Mr. King. On our next agenda, we'll be discussing tobacco regulations. What do you believe you will be able to apply to that process?
I would say it was now about two years ago, I made the switch from smoking traditional cigarettes to using the electronic cigarettes. And I can safely say that I would still be smoking cigarettes if it wasn't for that. So, I mean, regulation-wise, I'd be able to say, you know, smoking cigarettes is bad for you, and that is a proven fact. The electronic cigarettes are bad for you. That is a proven fact. But it's less. It's the ability to use that as a way of quitting smoking cigarettes, and then quitting that as well. And I can just give my experience on that.
Thank you. There's approximately 10 meetings left. What do you hope to accomplish in these 10 meetings?
Well, like I said in my statement, my hope is for there to be as little overdose deaths and struggle with sobriety in this town.
How do you anticipate bringing that initiative into the fold?
I would, I'm not saying you guys aren't, don't have any knowledge on it, but bring more knowledge to the Board of Health on overdoses and drug abuse.
One of our biggest challenges for the board is communication. How do you propose we overcome this barrier?
I know when I was filling out my application, there wasn't even a, an email address for Kevin. In fact, the only, I sent an email to everybody sitting here, and the only, with the exception of Alex, because I have his information on something else. So I contacted him through that. But Christina was the only one to email me back off of the town webpage. I would first try to get that up and going, so that not just you as the board can talk to each other, but people from the town can get ahold of you guys, and not think that you're ignoring them when you're just not getting an email.
I want to thank you for making me aware that those emails didn't come through. That's since been corrected. How do you see the board's role in ongoing pandemic management?
I just see it as Marty being more of the, he gives recommendations, and you guys kind of vote them in.
That is all.
Okay. Anyone else? No?
Mr. King, I just want to say that as a former Board of Health member myself, I understand the need for, our personal experiences matter, and bringing them to the board and what you can do. I mean, I understand that the Board of Health is a regulating board, and we all know that. But it's also, it's also important to be active amongst the causes, you know, that affect the Department of Health, the Health Department. You know, not desi, excuse me. So I, I like, so I like that you are trying to bring in your personal experiences to the board to help other people. I think that's incredible. And it goes above and beyond than just being a regulating board and being a voice for other people in town and different things. I'm a huge fan of communication. We need more communication and transparency, and stuff like that. I'm glad you reached out to all of us, you know, to discuss, you know, proposal for, you know, you to be appointed to the Board of Health, and things of that nature. And just as, on a personal note, I just want to say thank, you know, congratulations to you on, you know, your eight years sober. And I think it's, it's truly inspiring, because it's affected not just my family, but I'm sure there's everyone in this audience and people watching at home. You know, it, it means a lot that we have our elected officials fighting, you know, to advocate for, you know, substance addiction, and also, you know, how Melissa Pahn, she, you know, she had a suicide, you know, prevention training and things like that, suicide awareness with the Plymouth County, and I think that's just, that's just great. Not really a question there, but more of a statement. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from the boards? Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. Anyone else that is here tonight that wants to get up and introduce themselves and speak? If not, no worries. But if you do, please step up. See, I'm seeing none. So we had three applications, Andrew King, Matthew Bernard, and Bill Cormier, is that correct? Okay. So I'm not seeing anyone else step up this time. So I will open it up to the boards for discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Bill Cormier, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd actually like to nominate Andrew King.
I'll second that nomination for Andrew King.
Hold on one second. So let's, let's take those in order. Any other nominations first before we?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Matthew Bernard.
Okay.
I'll start with that.
Okay, so we had...
Bill Cormier was first. I did not hear a second on that one.
Okay. Bill Cormier was first. We had a second was Andrew King, and someone seconded Andrew King. Was that?
Did anyone second Bill Cormier?
No.
No, no one did. Did anyone second Andrew King? Was that you, Alex?
No.
Correct. Alex Hagerty.
You nominated me second, yeah. And then...
Christina?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, I can, yep.
Okay. Have we recommended that we take the nominations in order and ask for a second? Can we take a second nomination?
Okay.
The first nomination I heard was Bill Cormier. I would recommend you ask for a second on that and vote on that. I would recommend you ask for a second on that and vote on that. We should vote on the nominations.
Yeah. So Bill Cormier was nominated by Alex Bezanson. Is there a second for Bill Cormier on the Board? Okay, I'm hearing none. So I will move on to the second one was Andrew King. So we had a motion by Mike Koloji and we had a second by Alex Hagerty. Motioned and seconded, do we have further discussion on Andrew King? Anything from the Board? See the Board on Andrew King?
Well, sir, I appreciate that he's here tonight. Thank you.
Okay. So with that being said, let's, I do agree, we'll, we take them in order. We didn't have anything. So motion, a second on Andrew King. So no further discussion being heard on Andrew King. So we'll take a vote on that. So what's that?
Wouldn't we do the same, wouldn't we do Matthew and Andrew at the same time?
Yeah, we're taking them in order.
Okay.
We, they're both a motion and seconded, so we'll go with Andrew. We'll do a motion, then we'll go through Matthew. Yes?
I apologize for the procedure. If we vote on Andrew and it's a majority, do we then vote on, and then we then vote on Matthew, or is it?
Well, we have a point.
No, so.
So it's kind of a first come, first served, like we have a motion.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Well, we can, like I said, Christina, you did motion for Matthew Pinnard, and then it was seconded by Kevin, correct? Okay. So we do have a motion and a second on that. So just taking it in order. All right, so do we, do we need a roll call vote, or we go with just a?
No.
Okay.
Would you recommend a roll call vote? We just need that.
Roll call.
Put together what first is on a cell phone.
Okay. So we will do a roll call vote. I don't know if anyone has any preference, but I will take it, I will go Board of Selectmen first, that's fine. Alex Hagerty?
Aye.
Okay. Mike Koloji?
Aye.
Alex Bezanson?
Aye.
Tim?
Just a clarification, we have voted on the interpretation, am I correct?
That is correct.
I vote aye.
Chairman is going to be an aye. We'll go Christian.
No.
Okay. Melissa?
No.
Christine?
No.
And Kevin?
No.
Okay, so we have five ayes and four nos for Andrew King. That, that passes, Andrew King is appointed at this time. Thank you, Andrew. From here, Scott, do we want to have Andrew reach out to Leanne first to get contact? Okay.
Sworn in, give us information.
So Andrew, if you could reach out to the town clerk, Leanne Adams, maybe tomorrow or anything, give her a call, send an email to her. She will move you forward as far as getting you sworn in, getting you all the copies of the stuff you need. And then I would link in with Aaron Christian, who's the chairman of the Board, and he will take it from there as far as giving you anything further. Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, you guys, you guys need to adjourn.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion by Melissa, second by Kevin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, to you, Davis.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tim, you heard all that?
I'd just like to say thank you for voting for me. I look forward to working with you all and the Board of Health as well.
Definitely. Thanks, Tim. We're gonna hang him now, thank you.
I don't know if you're aware that we, my wife and I formerly have been substance awareness coalitions a few years ago. So I'd like to try.
I'd like to get more information on that.
Sure.
Become a part of that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so we are running a little bit behind. My apologies. But we have a 6:35 PM tax classification hearing. We'll move forward with that.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, my name is Yolanta, and I'm your tax assessor. I'll be doing fiscal year 22 classification hearing for you tonight. So every year, those present at our annual town meeting vote to approve the upcoming budget figures. The money to fund the budget comes from multiple sources like local receipts, revenues, and state aid. The remaining money comes from the levy. The levy refers to the amount of money a community can raise through real estate and personal property taxes. The classification hearing does not change the amount of levy which can be raised. A split rate will not increase revenue for the town. A split rate shifts some of the tax burden from all residential properties onto all commercial, industrial, and personal property accounts. Since you need to raise a fixed levy amount, evaluations and tax rates move in opposite direction. If the town value increases, the tax rate will decrease. If the town value decreases, the tax rate will increase. However, if authorized, capital exclusions or debt exclusions are approved, it is likely that the tax rate will increase no matter what. Here is our outstanding debt schedule. And it is the new high school, new police station, the senior center purchase, and the old high school windows and doors that we paid for. And in the right column, it will tell you which year it will be complete. So like the high school, not till 2041, police station, 2027, senior center, 2028, and the old high school, 2028. Community Preservation Act. The CPA does not increase the tax rate. It is a separate search out. It does not go toward the payment of your real estate tax bills or the general fund. For fiscal year 21, the town collected approximately 425,481 in CPA funds. The Board of Selectmen hold a classification hearing each year, like we are here tonight, to determine if the levy gets divided evenly through a single tax rate or if the tax rate burden gets shifted between the classes. And here are the current percentages. So it shows you the pie. The residential is at 88.3, commercial at 8.3, personal property at 2.3, and industrial at .92. Here's the historical class of percentages. So as you see, for fiscal 22, like I just mentioned, the pie, it's pretty much the same as the previous slide showing the, the percentages. Should the Selectmen choose to shift some of the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property, the shift may not be more than 150% of the original burden. So bottom line, if we stick to a single tax rate, it would be 1522 for residential and commercial. If we shift up to 150, it will be 1422 for the residential and 2283 for the commercial. Fiscal year 22 tax rate is 1648. The proposed tax rate for fiscal 22 is 1522. This is a decrease of $1.26. Let's talk averages. The current value of the average single-family home is 454,000. This is an average increase of $59,130. The taxes would be $6,909.88. Currently, 60.97% of all the single-family homes are valued at or below the average. The current value of the average commercial property is 987,279. This is an average decrease of 21,594, and the taxes would be 15,026.39. Currently, 72.9% of all the commercial properties are valued under 1 million. This slide shows you the impact of the shifts. So if we stayed at 1.00, like I mentioned before, the rate would be 1522 for both residential and commercial. If you go down to the bottom column at 1.50, it shows you what the impact would be. As you can see, the highest shift would result in commercial paying approximately 50% more in taxes, while residential parcels would only save around 6.5. Does that make sense? So here's some split rate information. Out of 351 communities in Massachusetts, only 108 have a split tax rate. 96.2 of those communities have a split tax rate for more than 10 years. 85.9 have split tax rate for more than 20 years. 60.7 have split tax rate for 40 years. The average residential percentage of the split rate communities is 79%. The average residential percentage of single-rate towns is 88.6%. Of the 26 cities and towns in Plymouth County, only five have a split rate. So the average residential percentage of these five communities is 80.7%. So for some final bits of information, when determining values, we are governed by the Department of Revenue Regulations. We must analyze qualified sales from the last full calendar year and adjust accordingly. For fiscal year 22 values, we must use sales from calendar year 20. Property values get adjusted after the sales analysis each year. Property values are submitted to and certified by the Department of Revenue each year. Property values may change as a result of building permits, sales inspections, random selection, or DOR requirement to visit a property at least once in a nine-year period. So in closing, I had a Department Board of Assessors meeting the other day, and the Board of Assessors voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen adopt a single tax rate without the residential exemption or small commercial exemption. So now I ask the Board to vote, unless you have questions.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Does the Board have any questions? Pretty thorough. I mean, I think, you've gone on, you've seen this year after year, there was a lot of information in there. If anyone has any questions, that will be the time. Let's see. 2027 and 2028, we do have three, three things that will be coming off of the outstanding debt schedule, so that does.
Correct, yep.
So that is in the near future. As far as the residential tax rate, I'm sorry, residential percentage went from 87% to 88% this year. So we went up by a point on residential and down by a point on commercial.
Correct, yep.
I did notice that. Again, that was just one of the biggest things that I saw. I don't know.
Well, my thought on a split tax rate is we only have just under 10% commercial and industrial. And with the widening of Route 18, we're going to be looking for commercial businesses to come into town and, which will help us with our taxes. And I don't think the way to attract business is to have a split tax rate at this point. Most towns our size that have our amount of commercial and industrial have a single tax rate. You get into Brockton, and they have a huge industrial, commercial base, and they do have a split tax rate. But I don't think it's the right thing to do in this town, especially if we want to fill all the vacant spots along Route 18.
Okay. If there's anything else from the Board? So we would take a motion to.
Yes?
As it's a public hearing, does the public get to say anything?
Yes. So with that being said, we'll, I'm open up to the public. Does anyone want to get from the public and make any comments or ask any questions? Please step up, state your name and address.
Rick Collins, 74 Orange Street. Math is not my strong suit, so I just want to make sure I understand some of the numbers. The average tax bill, I believe, as was presented, was 690988. And so if I go by what last year's average house price was, plus last year's average rate, the bill was 6907, so that this tax rate would generate an average property tax increase of $402. Is that correct? I don't know if it's a way to do that quickly.
Rick, I think we've been emailing all week long, and I have answered all your questions.
I never asked what the average increase would be on a bill.
I just did my presentation, and I told you what the average increase would be on an average annual home. And I will tell you right now what it would be, but you have been emailing all week. The current value of the average single-family home is 454,000.
Yep.
This is an average increase of $59,130.
Yep.
The taxes would be $6,909.88.
Yep.
Okay, so currently, 61% of all single-family homes are valued at or below the average.
My question was that the average tax bill then is going to increase $402, correct?
No.
For over last year, it won't?
No, the rate's going down. It went down more.
Yes, the rate's going down, but the home value's going up. So you're actually paying more.
Yeah, it's the opposite.
If the, if the average house is increasing $49,000, it's going to be, people are going to be having an average pay more than they are this year, correct?
Not necessarily.
And what was it last?
Because we're basing it on the averages of 454,000, so it will be different. We have houses selling in Allenville over $800,000.
So what was the average tax bill this year?
This year?
Yes.
It was, I think, 300.
Not asking.
39, I think.
It wasn't asking the, the average home value, it was asking what the average tax bill was.
I can find that out for you tomorrow.
Well, I mean, I, I did the math. I'm just, it was 1648 times 394 divided by 1,000, correct? Which is 6507, which would mean.
I don't have those answers for you tonight. I asked you to send me questions, so I'll be long, and you have none, so I can have I asked you to send me questions, so I'll be long, and you have none, so I can have the answer for you tomorrow.
I sent you a couple rounds, and this was additional questions that I had that I thought would be worth asking in a public session. I apologize. My point is, and this is not a criticism of the Board of Assessors or anything, this is basic math, but I need, I think people need to understand this, this is how the tax system works in this state, is that because the home values in this town are increasing significantly faster than commercial values, that that means that residential property tax bills are going to be going up more than commercial tax bills. So we're actually seeing a fifteen thousand dollar decrease in commercial tax, property tax values. So the average business was a million dollars last year, it's nine eighty-seven this year. That's fine, that's the math, those are the numbers.
It's going to, it's going to go up four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
On the average, it'll go up four hundred dollars.
So the average commercial tax bill, with the same formula, it's going to decrease sixteen hundred dollars. So people just need to understand that this is just how the math works out, and why it's important that we focus on developing the commercial tax base. This is all I'm asking the questions for. This is not a knock against the Board of Assessors, or the math, or the valuations. This is to understand why it's so important that we build out our commercial tax base, because right now...
Correct.
One hundred percent.
Let's go ahead.
Otherwise, this is the shift that's going to happen, that the commercial tax base keeps dropping, and it means that it's supplemented by homeowners, by us.
Exactly, yeah.
So as the budget starts, I will once again make the push that we need someone like a town planner to help make sure that we're in the best position to market the town and boost up the commercial tax base. So that, this is the only reason why I bring this up. It's not a criticism.
You are correct, it will, the average will go up four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Anyone else from the public want to speak, ask any questions? Okay, hearing none.
I would make a motion to keep a single tax rate.
To adopt it. What was Assessors' recommendation to adopt a single tax rate?
What he said.
So there is a motion by Alex Zanson. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Board on this? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right. So we'll move on now to vote to approve the minutes of October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one. They are in your packet, if you would like to review them, I will entertain a motion.
We gave mine over the weekend. That's just...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-one meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? We'll move on to discussion and possible vote to issue an RFP for Groveland Street landfill final closure services. Scott, you want to touch on this?
Yeah, there, there are, there's an opportunity out there for us to have a company come out and, at no cost to the town, they will provide a clean and, a clean cap to the existing landfill. So they will bring in, they will get all the permits through DEP for us, they will bring in the fill, they'll have it tested and examined, and make sure that it meets all of DEP's requirements, and they'll cap the, cap that landfill. We'll put into a, you know, a monitoring process after that, but there'll be no, no cost to the town, it'll enhance that area when we're done. We'll have a more enhanced leaf collection area, and I think we also have like a, some ancillary recycling over there that we can do, so I think we can clean it up nice. So we want to, I would like to put this out to bid, see if any companies are interested in doing that. I think this Board will review these RFPs as they come in and meet with these, any companies that are interested, and we'll see what the, what kind of interest we get.
So a little background on that for people that don't know. This is the capped landfill up at Groveland Street where the...
Compost site.
Compost site is. This landfill was capped, I believe, in the, was, we stopped using it in the seventies, I believe. And DEP has monitored it for many, many years, and they still do, and several years ago, they said that we had to cap it, and at the time, I heard numbers between two and four million dollars to cap it. And then they said, well, maybe you don't have to cap it right now, but you're probably going to in the future. So there are some companies out there that are willing to cap these landfills at no charge to the town, because, I believe it's because of all the construction in Boston.
Yeah, and they have a certain amount of debris and fill that they have to place.
And, I mean, this is a golden opportunity for the town, if we can get someone to do that, and possibly save the town four million dollars if this doesn't happen, you know? I mean, if, if we do this, it could possibly cost the town four million, or even more, if it's five years, ten years from now, when DEP says, okay, I want it capped. So I think this is a great opportunity for the town, and hopefully we have some companies that are willing to do this.
So this would effectively cap what we're using now, and then...
No, there's about eleven acres.
I'm saying like the current compost site, that, that's the amount?
That's only a little tiny piece of it.
There's everything behind it.
It goes over into, we had to do a land swap, I believe, with Kate Fortlumber when they built their building, because some of it had gone onto that property.
Okay.
So we took the property back and did a land swap with them, because we had actually contaminated. And that's what's happening, this is going to continue to grow and contaminate if it's not capped properly. And we are going to be on the hook for a lot of money eventually, if we can't get this done and stop it now.
And it would give us the opportunity to open up another site or a bigger site?
I think part of the RFP would be that the...
Well, we won't want a new landfill.
No, no.
We don't need a new landfill, we're done with that, we'll cap this, but the existing compost area can be cleaned up and more organized.
Yeah, that's what I meant, my apologies, yeah.
Exactly.
So that would be more enhanced and everything, and maybe containers for certain things, and...
I just think of Hanover, for example, they have a, I mean, they have a pretty elaborate, I mean, but they even have stuff there, I mean, they have dumpsters for everything that you can go, and they have a swap site and everything else there, I just didn't know if that was...
It's not in the cards for us right now.
No.
But this may be, we may be able to do solar or something else on the capped landfill.
Okay.
Once it's capped, so that would be good for the town also.
But again, it's savings, we could save up to four million dollars.
And it's probably more than that by the time that happens. This is something that should have been done several years ago, and Scott wasn't in that seat at the time, so it wasn't done.
So, I mean, we have nothing to lose by putting the RFP out.
If people are interested, they'll come, they'll meet with this Board, they'll...
And if they're not, then we won't.
Submit their proposals, and if we, they don't meet our standards, then we don't have to do it.
But it has been going on in other towns, so I think it's a great thing to put it out there and do.
Okay. Time is here. Any questions from the Board? Any input?
And you did say, Scott, so this RFP, this would be no cost to the town?
The, putting the RFP out is no cost to the town, and we're assuming that the respondents will come to us and say that they'll do it for no cost to the town, correct?
Okay.
So, you know, I could be wrong, they might all come in here and say...
No, no, we don't know.
They may say it's going to cost you four million dollars, in which case we may say, well, we're not interested right now.
Some of them may say, we'll do it for a million, someone might say two million, someone might say, I've got the material, we'll do it for nothing, you know?
We won't know until we try.
Okay.
But I, I, you know, I...
But this is the first step.
This is step number one, and see if there's any interest, and if the interest, if they come in and they are willing to do it, then I think it's a home run.
Yeah, no, I think this is a great step forward, I think, you know, I've, I've volunteered a couple of times down at the compost site, and I think it'd be great to, you know, clean it up, and so put the cap, you know, and clean it up, and really get this going for the town and stuff. It would be really great.
I think it would probably be sort of a two-year process.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine.
Yeah.
We would, you know, we'd have to look at, there's a lot of things to consider when we're doing it, and while we're writing the RFP, and then the requirements of it, like I said, the DEP monitoring, third-party monitoring, is they're bringing the stuff in, and then, you know, the amount of material that we want brought in at any given point in time, and the hours of operation of moving it around.
I was going to say, there'd be a lot of logistics to it, we have to discuss, obviously, because of the impact to the roads, the streets, the neighborhoods, but the overall impact, getting this capped, and if we were able to get this and save the town millions of dollars, I think that's a humongous benefit.
And it, you know, obviously it protects us, protects the environment.
Absolutely. Okay, so can, I would entertain a motion.
Yeah, I think, you know, a motion just to authorize me to do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to issue an RFP for Groveland Street landfill final closure services.
Second that?
Good motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. All right, next up is vote to appoint as the Town's Plymouth County Opera Program Authorized Representative Town Manager Scott Lambiasi, and Authorized Reporter, Preparer, Finance Director Sonia Hodge.
Yeah, so the next, this one and the next one, we went through this for the CARES Act, and this is a, you know, different set of money, this is the American Recovery Plan Act money. So it's basically the same thing, you're just voting for myself and for Sonia to reach out and work with Plymouth County specifically on, on the opera money. And then the second one is because we had initially, the town accountant, when we voted the CARES Act, initially it was Sue Mokren, and now that it's Andrew Noken, we have to vote for Andrew Noken to accept the CARES Act money. There is actually a couple of payments left out there that we're waiting on, so this would probably free that up.
Okay, so the second one is a vote to authorize Town Accountant Andrew Noken to request and receive CARES Act money on behalf of the Town of Abington.
So, yeah, your first vote would, and I'll read you what the motion should be. Vote that the Abington Town Manager Scott Lambiasi is authorized to approve, finalize, and submit on behalf of the town any such ARPA grant application, and to make all representations and certifications required to be made on behalf of the town to complete each application with such approval, representations, and certification to be evidenced by the signature of the Town Manager on such application, and if any such ARPA grant is awarded, the Town Manager shall be the recipient of such grant on behalf of the town.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, and we have a second. Do we have any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Now we're still on the ARPA, this is another one, vote that the Abington Finance Director Sonia Hodge and Town Accountant Andrew Noken is authorized to prepare and enter information into the Plymouth County American Rescue Plan portal in support of one or more applications to Plymouth County for grants, ARPA grants, to be funded from a grant received by Plymouth County under the American Rescue Plan Act.
I'll make that motion as well.
I'll second.
Basically, a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
And then the last one is just a vote to authorize Town Accountant Andrew Noken to request and receive CARES Act money on behalf of the Town of Abington.
The Honors?
Sure, I will vote to authorize Town Accountant Andrew Noken to request and receive CARES Act money on behalf of the Town of Abington.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion from the Board? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? All right, next up is review Selectmen's policies and procedures. I know Tim is not here tonight, so me personally, I think we should push this off the next meeting, but what I did give to all you tonight, a few bullet points on liaisons, I, I would hope you look at it as a draft and give me some input. I'd love to get something together for us to vote on, to put into our, into our packets, policies, procedures, and regulations. As far as the policies and procedures, did anyone take a look, and is any review on those, or any, any suggestions, or...
I do have one that I will read to you that I worked on over the weekend. I think that we need a policy that states that all appointees must take an open meeting law ethics class that will, will be provided by the town on an annual basis in the month of November, like we're doing coming up, but I think that should be an annual thing. Conservation appointees must take a MAC, M-A-C-C, which is the Massachusetts Association, the Conservation Commission. They must take a wetland class within one year of appointment. I had spoken to Scott about this, and we had talked about six months, but I think at least in these, this day and age, they might not be able to get it in six months, you know, at a MAC class.
They are all online now.
They are online now?
Yeah.
So we can discuss whether we want that done within six months or a year. And then, I think also, conservation members should be required on an annual basis to take a class with MAC. Failure to do so would be grounds for removal. I think ZBA members must attend an annual class that will be provided by the town for both ZBA and planning, which we're planning on doing, and I think that needs to be on an annual basis. We cannot remove Planning Board members, we can't force them to do this, but with the charter review, maybe we can. But ZBA, they're appointed by us, so we can require them to do that, or they could be removed. And I don't think anyone will have a problem doing this, I think...
Again, we're going to provide it.
We're going to provide it, and I think most of our volunteers, if not all of our volunteers, come in here, and they don't know much about these boards and committees, but they want to volunteer. So I think it's up to us that we need to teach them what they need to do. I got on the conservation, everyone knows I was on there for twenty-three years. When I got on, I knew nothing about it, and I went to the MAC classes, and I had Frank Mackowitz, for anyone that remembers Frank, he was a charter member of the original Conservation Commission, and he was my mentor, and, you know, Frank knew every stream and brook and wetland in the town, so unfortunately, no one else can have his expertise, but he was a big help to me, and we went to all the classes and everything, and, and I think we need to get back to that, we need to require it, and I think it would be good for the, the volunteers, you know, they're going to learn what, what they're actually supposed to be doing. So those were some of the thoughts I had, and again, you know, I can get this to Scott, and he can get it out before the next meeting, we can discuss it. But while we're on there, I'd also like to add to the charter that, and when we meet with the Charter Commission, we will talk about this, but I think that it should be in the charter that all appointed and elected persons are required to attend the annual OML class that will be provided by the town.
Okay.
Board of Health, Board of Health should be doing Board of Health classes, I mean, there's all these things online that you can do. FinCom, I know, FinCom didn't even have handbooks until Scott got here. So every board has their specific things they need to learn about, and I think with Scott here now, and this board, that we've proven we're going to be an active board, and try and give all our volunteers and elected officials the tools they need to make the right decisions. And I think that's what we need to do going forward.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, it's imperative of us to really move this forward and, and to stay with it, so...
So I will get my notes to Scott, and he can send them out, and we can discuss those at the next meeting. And we can discuss those at the next meeting along with anything else that you guys have.
So Mike, Alex, anything from you guys on policies, procedures, or anything else?
We're not voting on any policies or procedures tonight.
No, I'd like to, especially with Tim not here, I'd like to at least get it to the next meeting. And if Alex can get those things over to Scott and Scott can get them out to us, so we can
If you guys have anything you wanna add, you can send them over.
Anyone else, you know, let's get it
I'll put it all in one pile.
Yeah, and then we'll get it and we can discuss it at the next meeting.
Sure. But I think at this point, we push it off to the next meeting and then go from there.
But everyone should glance through the policy and procedures handbook. And some of the stuff might be outdated, you might think it's outdated and needs to be changed. We should certainly look at that.
Yeah, I mean, general rule, usually, you would do an annual review of policies and procedures. So, you know, some of them, as you look through, they're dated, you know, years ago. They should really, these should be looked at every single year.
Right.
Even if there's no changes, you're still reviewing it and updating it yearly on an annual basis.
But we have been such a busy board the last year, so, so it's kind of fallen. You know, we had talked about doing this back in June.
Okay, so if you'll get those to Scott's and Alex and Mike, if you have anything to get it over to Scott, we'll pull it all together for the next meeting and then
Reach out to Tim.
We'll reach out to, yeah, can you reach out to Tim and let him know as well? And then we can kind of go from there. And if there's nothing further on that, I will move on to the town manager report. But Alex and Mike, do you have anything else or no?
I do have, I have one more thing. A resident reached out to me and said that the flag at Riley Fields was tattered and falling apart and wondered if we were gonna do something for Veterans Day. So I don't know who's in charge of flags.
I will check with Adam. He will reach out to Jason Lynn, and I'm sure they'll take care of it right away.
Well, that, and if they could check all the flags in town. And if they, they need flags immediately. Several years ago, several people donated flags to the Abington Celebrates Committee. At least when I donated one, I know Dory and Mark Jamison did and other people did. And they've been flying them down at Island Grove. So if we need flags immediately to replace the damaged ones, then they should have them.
Yeah, I'll check with Adam. He's very good at staying on top of that, actually. And he's been quite busy, as you can see, planning a parade and working for that Veterans Day and luncheon.
I know you gave Adam a shout out, but he has worked out so great, so great for the town. I have a personal thing that he's working on for me that's got nothing to do with Abington. But he just, he's there, willing to help at all times.
That's actually the good thing about Adam. It doesn't necessarily have to be Abington. It's veteran-related, he'll help you out no matter what.
Interestingly enough, is one thing that we did see with Adam's workload is the better job he does, and it gets better every day. The word gets out and veterans who were, who lived in this town, went to other towns in the past, are all coming back. And then the veterans from other towns who feel as though that the resources here are better are actually reaching out too. So he's, he's a victim of his own success in that way, but it's all very good.
All right, so that brings us to the town managers' report.
So currently, we're seeking some clarification on some of our opera revenue replacement calculations. We're hoping to have, we're hoping to have it this week to have a report for the finance committee. And I would have shared it with you tonight, so just to have those exact figures of, of where we are with that number. Working currently on an RFP for services that are gonna assist the Affordable Housing Trust with the school in Glen Owitt Way properties. We actually had two grants that we were combined, or we're trying to combine, but there are two different, one's a state agency and a quasi-state agency that are making it difficult for us to combine them. But we're moving forward either way. Tomorrow, the Lieutenant Governor will be at Rockland Town Hall, 10:30 a.m. She's going to be awarding the Abington-Rockland Joint Water Works a grant for $2.2 million. This money will be used to expand the capacity and make upgrades at the Myers Ave Drinking Water Treatment Plant. This is, you know, much needed after, you know, we've been in this moratorium for quite some time and holding up some projects because of it. So this is gonna add about 160,000 gallons a day, I believe, to the capacity. And it's, and they're well into, they're well into the design of this, or well into the permitting and design. So I think once this money is injected into us, it'll move on pretty quickly. So I'm looking forward to going down there tomorrow and, and, you know, receiving that grant. We've got about 30, 25 or 30 people signed up for the open meeting law training on the 16th. I hope, you know, that we start seeing some more interest. You know, again, we think it's
It's supposed to be RFP?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not mandatory, but we'd like to know, just so we can be prepared. Then some of the other things that we're looking into, that we're concerned about is new OSHA requirements for COVID-19. And I wanted to give another shout out to John Stone, that, you know, they finished their LED program where they switched out all the lights. It was a lot of work from him and, you know, Jeannie and everyone in his office over there that got all this paperwork and chased it around. But they did, the town just received a check for $51,000. So not only did they replace all of the streetlights for free, they put in energy-efficient streetlights that are gonna save us tens of thousands of dollars per year. But then they also gave us this, you know, one-time rebate of $51,000. So again, much-needed money, and we're very appreciative of it. That's it.
So is the money going to repair the
The money is not going to repair the roof, which it was, but
Yeah, we had some damage to salt barn?
Yeah, actually, there were several properties. Our American Legion Hall had some damage when the tree fell down on that. Damaged a loading dock or ramp in the side of the building and tore off some of the roof. So we have insurance coming to look at that. We lost a good chunk of our roof over at the salt shed and washed away some of our salt that had freshly been loaded up for the winter, so. We had a sign over at the Riley Field Nisby Bandstand area that had some damage to it. So we're looking to get that fixed. That seemed to be the extent of the major damage. I mean, obviously, there was just a lot of trees down, a lot of wires down. We're gonna try and, I'm working with John Nuttall, he had mentioned that maybe we can get a, one of the power company representatives to come in here at some point and meet with this board and just kind of give us an after action on that. What, what actually happened, the extent of what happened and, you know, what they may be doing to mitigate having such trouble getting things back on in the future. So hopefully, we'll, we'll see that in the near future. But, you know, with today's, today's event this morning, with our bomb scare at the high school, and then the events, you know, of the storm, there was a lot of work with our emergency management and seeing all of those pieces come together was pretty interesting.
Definitely.
Were you on?
All right.
Yeah, some of the biggest troubles that we had with that, though, during that storm was not only did we lose all of our power here, you know, essentially throughout the whole community in the South Shore. But when we lost our phones and we lost our servers and then cell towers became inundated, that very few spots could, we actually communicate. And most of us were trying to run ours, the town of the departments remotely
On data.
And on data, and it was very difficult. So it was just something that we realized that we have to
On top of everything else, right?
Exactly, yeah. Something else to sort of figure and make sure that we're prepared for if and when it happens again.
I know we were out without cable for about 24 hours at the firehouse. That was pretty bad. I'm only joking, I'm only joking.
That's tough.
Just glad everyone survived.
Yeah. Okay.
I did have one question, maybe it's for Scott or Mr. Chairman. I did, a few residents did reach out regarding the Conservation Commission and when we are potentially having a vote to appoint a new voting member to the Conservation Commission?
Yeah, so just to give a quick overview, we met on, let me see, was it the 25th? Going back in my calendar here. We met on the 25th, and it was posted the next day on the 26th. So it was pointed out in the charter about 14 days, in the regulations, I should say. Aaron Christian had pointed that out last time that there was a separation. So I think there was a, at that point, we were looking at it and we were trying to get it done tonight. Unfortunately, tonight's only the, technically, the 13th day. So because of that, a few people did reach out about it to me, about it needs to go the full 14 days. That is why we're not doing it tonight. We'll, it will close, is it tomorrow?
Close is on the 17th, and that would be the Wednesday before your next meeting. So it will admit the requirement of a minimum of 14 days and
And I think that's, it is posted on the town site as the 17th. I believe that date is, is on there. That's been the date that's on there, I believe, as well.
Yeah, Nancy, our administrative assistant, had pointed out that to us the very next day that we were jumping the gun a little bit.
So I've seen some of the applicants that have come in. And one, I understand, is an associate member now.
Yeah, there was a request to make that up.
Should she be the one that's appointed, that would leave an opening for an associate?
Correct.
Can we advertise or put it on the agenda, possible vote for, well?
You still have the 14 days.
You'd have to go 14 days again.
Your rules.
Yeah. No, that wasn't my rule, believe me. That was someone else's rule. So
And again, if that was posted tomorrow, that would put us a day out.
My point is if that person's posted, now we're gonna have another opening.
Yeah, yeah, we will.
And we can't, because we don't have the opening.
You can't anticipate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'd have to wait till that meeting and whether that appointment goes through or not.
Yeah.
I think that would be another, I think that's a great thing for the, you know, if
I think that's something you can address in your policies.
It is in the policy.
Because it's one of your appointments, so you can address it.
It was changed in the policy when I was on the board before.
Yeah, so you can maybe make it
It usually closes the Wednesday prior to our meeting. So I mean, you're looking at a, maybe a 10-day window, if that's the case, if you want to go meeting to meeting with it. I mean, we're not
And as long as it doesn't conflict with anything in the charter.
Really, before, we had time, I think, for the annual reappointments and everything else, or openings, we put it out for a month. Charter review, put it for a month. And now we're coming up with these one here and there.
And once all these boards are straightened out, I think going into next year, unless we have people resigning or whatever, it should go a lot smoother.
Yeah.
This has been an extraordinary year for many reasons. And I think it's just gonna get smoother from here.
So I think, Scott, so the people who put in for Conservation Commission, we can send someone out to them, the ones that have so far, that will be doing it on the 22nd, our next meeting? Just so they know?
On the, yeah, if we haven't already, I will make sure that we do.
Have Nancy or someone make a reminder out there?
Yeah.
That way, we need to get that moving and that will give us the timeframe. But that's why, Alex, just so you know. We missed it by a day, so.
Which was impossible to know.
Yeah, so, okay. If there's anything else from the board, if not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous? We are adjourned.